At least Marcus gone, Jeff should.
Uh, we have one addition to the agenda. Number 11 on the business end. We need that to know a lot of business.
That would be great.
Is that the only addition to the agenda?
That is the only addition I have.
Uh, we have one addition without an addition pending motion to an opt addition. So, motion reverse. Second, I call it. Any further discussion? Hearing the halls and papers, same as I. All same sign. Motion carries. Okay, can you give your poll comments? No, we will move on to approve or correct the mess from the July 16th of the morning.
I'm going to motion over to the minutes.
Yeah, motion reverse.
A second.
A second, Sheriff. Any further discussion? Hearing the halls and papers, same as I. All same sign. Motion carries. So, we've got a number of, uh, assignments under consent to be had.
Yeah, just be aware that like, if you look at E, which is a three act play, like we're in this city, we do not have any, um, things that right now, we're not quite sure, Lori, I believe, that we're going to do the three act play yet or not, or will be a reason.
Right, the three act play at this time, although Mr. Rasmussen is interested, he wasn't quite sure how much he could do since he hasn't done a play before was one reason. The other thing is, we have a musical every two years. And depending on the number of kids going out for the play and what they're involved with, is can they do two plays and, and how full their plates get? So, what we'd like to do is do the musical, which is playing for this year, and then talking with the kids interested or that may be interested, decide if we're going to do the three act play or not. So, to kind of put that one on hold at this time.
I just wondered if there's, or was aware that we still have that there, and if we do agree, how to bring it back to the board for approval?
Okay, and the motion to it's that, as printed here. Okay, motion reverse to approve the consent agenda. Second, approved. Any further discussion? Hearing the halls and papers, same as I. All same sign. Motion carries. Okay, we move to number 11 on the business end. We have Hussein Christian like, uh, here tonight, this is important to, give us an update on the ball field and some other issues that, uh, that I have. Come to you.
The, thank you for bringing us on the agenda. I'm just here to give you a quick, uh, update and then answering questions if you have any, and then Chris has some things to go over also. Um, as far as the grandstand portion goes, um, everything is, everything is in the works. We are waiting for the structural drawings for the project itself. Once we receive those drawings, we can get some of the major bids, especially pre-class. We began the process of cutting the power, we'll start cleaning up and we'll start tearing down some of the, uh, construction area that we need to, like the old concession stand, the backstop so forth. That's underway. Um, Johnny's been great, so he's helping us get everything located out there. So, at this particular point, um, I would say that our goal is to start, um, doing some, bringing in water and sewer in September, October. And, uh, we'll be putting in the footings as soon as the pre-class, which now is looking like November. We were delayed because of the drawings, but, uh, as far as, as far as the project goes, everything is underway. We're getting quotes and, uh, everything looks, everything up to that. I don't think you have any questions as far as.
In the funding for Vima, all that is better talked about to us.
Because of your quick actions, that's all taken care of. We've got everything underway. We have to begin our paperwork as far as our track and traceability. But, uh, yeah, everything's, I mean, it's.
We were extremely happy that when they cut the power off of the, the lights and the, and the field, nothing else per diem, so.
Somehow it's possible.
We're happy with the results that are.
And if you ever have any questions, feel free to give us, uh, give us a call. But, uh, that, every phase of this is very important as far as where water is in the city, where sewer is where the power is. The power was fed originally just to the grandstand area and ballpark area, which is good. If we were peeling power off, we'd have some major expense, but none of the football field is affected, so we just did a test of shut off. We won't touch anything for a little while, make sure there's no surprises. And, um, we will be bringing in, we will be needing to bring in more power than you currently have there. So, a bigger service coming in. Um, as far as the city goes, water and sewer, everything's on the street outside. So, we'll be having direct access to water and sewer from that side, so we won't have to go through the rest of your property to, uh, get at that. So, everything so far is, uh, we had no surprises.
So, I mean, what was your assessment for the addition? I mean, things all perfectly, motion average.
I mean, everybody has their, has their optimistic goals. As to me, I made June to be my, my true goal. There's some that you'll need to have at that stage, but there's a lot that takes place with all of all of the doors. There's a lot that takes place with, uh, especially with a lot of the in-kind labor that we're asking for. There's a lot of timing issues and some of the things we can't control, the new kinds of, of pre-class. Once the pre-class structure comes, um, this winter, the pre-class will reset. So, we will have a structure yet this winter. That pass that happened, I'm already in big trouble. And then from that point, we can work on the interior during the winter. Um, we'll be able to heat it and put the bathrooms in, put the concrete in. We're doing meeting of every, every sector from plumbing to electrical to roofing, so it's, it's underway and we'll, we'll keep your pulse in there. I know if you want us, what's that? Oh, we may be, we may start bringing in some of the dirt this fall for the burn. I'm just glad we can get that before lower restrictions come out in the spring. So, you might see some of that happening and make sure that we want to get things out of, out of hand as far as piles and stuff goes right now. We may start bringing in some of the, some of the film that's needed for the burn this summer. Otherwise, everything looks good. If you have, ever have any questions, feel free to call Chris or I, and, uh, if you have a want to report, we'll be more happy to come.
Uh, one other question. If it's not completed by the rest of season next year, can you still use it? Do you need ways to be constructed or?
My, my opinion would be that it should be originally, this was going to be moved to like, for example, regal field if they have to. Um, it could be, depending on where we at, where we are at, it could be dangerous to be playing on the field, um, as far as equipment and so forth. But it really depends on how it goes this winter. If we have a nice winter, we'll, we actually could play on it. We really could. If we have a bad winter, then we might be still doing some dirt working and some construction. We're hoping the Tarpin and actually be able to build some temporary shelters and actually make some of the block. And part of the reason is, if you're wondering, is to get this done during the winter, we get so much more help from our local contractors than when it's in the summertime. So, we'll do everything we can to get it done, so.
Max, you and I have talked a little bit about this. We're not proceeding anything other than that the camp is all in this case, even if we're laying out the roads.
Right, yeah, I mean, we've known about a potential project for a couple of years now and our conference schools are aware of this and know that. I mean, that worst case scenario, we would play on the road if we couldn't get a field. Um, but in the past, we've played at Regal or Rosco, like Henry, and so as long as those fields are available, that would be our first choice to play at those.
We've talked, I mean, schools obviously, well, we're in the distance season, maybe two weeks. We're doing, we're going to do everything we can to have it ready, even if it's not, maybe the, the concession stand can't be open or something. As long as field's ready to go and is playable and, you know, when you're dealing with the backgrounds and you're dealing with, you're going to have to have the netting and stuff because you can't have people sitting there not protected. So, I mean, and, you know, field might be perfect, but if you don't have the netting and some of that stuff's not done, you can't be doing, play a ball game and everything, so. But we'll do everything, uh, everything that our power to have it ready for, if not the first thing shortly thereafter. Um, the other thing that I wanted to talk about too is, um, to bring up to the school board, it's kind of been, we've talked in our group, we've just kind of talked around it a few times. Um, it's kind of come to the forefront, we don't want to be, maybe we'll handle it a little bit, okay? Uh, we don't want to make this, uh, like we're trying to be behind anybody's back or anything, but when the, we're talking about beer sales at the ballpark and if it's a doable thing, if it's a legal thing, if it's a, um, a possibility. And I guess from when we started doing this, we did not want this just to be a, a baseball field. Uh, we want this to be a community product, I mean, a multi-purpose facility. That's how we sold it. We were serious about that. Uh, we didn't know we were as serious about it as, as it's becoming apparent that other people were and wanting to use us soon. Uh, Roger Oakstein had made mention of myself, I think to Bruce, a few other people. I think Bruce Vanderpulson, who's right next door, gets to hear it probably a lot, uh, for Roger. Uh, but he, he's got this idea of bringing a big veteran, a local, you know, big, I don't know, Bruce, maybe you can add a little bit to this. Roger's still over there. Basically, the big veterans, the celebration.
You attribute to veterans and expecting lots of people.
Right, I mean, he's expecting over 5,000, at first 10,000, he said, and he were between 5 and 10,000 people and he wants to go to the, first he wanted to do it on Memorial Day and he said, there's no way heck it'll be ready, you know? So, he said, well, July 4th. And he said, that's doable, okay? It also gives us a deadline, uh, which probably helps us too. But with that, and it's, I mean, we knew he was talking about things like that. Next thing we knew, we opened up the paper on July 17th and it was on the front page that Roger's at city council and he's talking about it and that he's going to have this at the grandstand and they're going to sell beer and everything else. We're like, whoa, wait a minute here. Um, we haven't, we don't have a field, we don't have permission to sell beer, we don't have anything. But it is a great idea. And we also would like to be able to sell beer at this stadium on a, we've, you know, we're, we're open to a trial basis, say a, a five-year trial basis is kind of what we throwing out there saying, if it's legal and, and it can be done by a lease to the baseball association, to the city, something like that, um, where beer could be sold there, um, during specific times, obviously not when school's in session. And if you, no selling it, you know, by the time Labor Day, it almost be between Memorial Day and Labor Day per se, with last day of school until Labor Day or something like that. Um, that's kind of what we're looking at and we're coming to the, to the school board, not like we're hiding behind this, especially when it comes on the paper, but to say, if we are able to sell beer there, we are going to be able to do additional events. It is a, it's our revenue stream, there's just no doubt about it. Um, Roger expects a lot of people for this. He expects that we'll sell a ton of food, a lot of beer, there'll be a ton of people. Um, the regional baseball tournament was just held in party this last weekend, last two weekends. They drew over 3,000 people there for two weekends. Um, they'll net in excess of $30,000 for two weekends of work. Um, that's something that I know Painsill will have when we have this, um, as long as we can sell beer. And it's a, it's a big deal. A lot of people come to town for that. It's not just for us, it's for the community. I mean, there's, all these people got to go eat somewhere besides the ballpark. They all go all places, they, they stay after, they stay at the hotel, they use the restaurants, I mean, everything. I think that, I think people are taking a hold of this more than we thought they even would and seeing the drawings and stuff. And we just want to come and say, hey, today, is it, is it something that can be looked into? We're not asking you to approve it or anything like that. We're asking to say can, you know, you have Bob or somebody look into that to see if it is legal and how to go about doing it. And then at that point, if it is able to be doing it, if we are able to do it, then we would ask for the, you know, formal permission of either, do we need to ask for it as a baseball association? Does the city need to lease it or how it needs to be done? We're not 100% certain. We are pretty sure that it can be done, but definitely some work needs to be done, so. Questions on that? Concerns, anything at this point or thoughts?
When you say 5,000 people, I'm like, well, how about the parking? Did you probably try to talk to the county about how you provide for that many people? Somebody's going to ask that question.
Oh, I'm sure. I mean, you've got the parking lots here and I don't know how many people that will hold, I just. This is, this is very pointed. I think that there's.
We have these school parking lots and we have the parking lots across the road.
The Legion, they said they're going to allow them to park. It's, I think at 3,300, there was over 2,000 people at parking on a weekend. They had no parking. Trust me, I was there. Um, and they were able to get them in. I mean, it's, you know, your worst case scenario, you've got those, the JV, all of, all that land up there, you can park cars on for a day too. So, there's, parking is certainly, I think there's a lot of other issues obviously that have to get through too, but, I don't know. I just would hope that we have an open mind on this. I, beer sales on school ground is a, is a different thought, I guess. But I think it's a doable thing, as long as it's done right. That's why the one reason that we said too, it's not something that's, when we've talked about it, maybe a five-year trial period just to say, hey, let us get our feet on earth, make sure this is made then right, and then we can take a look at it. It's almost like, you know, you set a five-year base table. That's a thought that we have, nothing else more than that, so.
Yeah, I think there's two questions. Number one, first question is, is it legal? And I have talked with a few people about this and I have gotten various responses from most few people. So, I sort of haven't gotten anything clear cut whether it is or whether, whether it's not. Um, if it's not legal and we can't do that, that resolves the situation and it can't be done. Um, if it is legal, then the second question is, is it's legal? Does this district want to do that? So.
I guess what we're asking for is for you guys to create permission to somebody to find out if it's legal, first of all. That probably Bob or.
I'm assuming you guys will come over this way.
That sounds like a good idea.
Are you kind of looking for authorization from us to?
I would like the board to just tell me that this is something that you want me to get some time on. I, I know that just because of the timing, I read the article, just so that the audience knows what he, uh, they handed over was just a copy of the article that was in the, the Painsill Press. Um, and I know that we're supposed to have a copy for everybody, so, or at least.
I do have western copies.
Yeah, yeah, so they need one, it's there, so it was just that. Um, I would like that because it will take some time to get an answer for that. And I, I think we'll have to push this board if they're going to get an answer on a timely manner to answer the question that Roger would have.
The one thing that we feel for Roger, Roger's doing a lot of prep on this and he, he's going to do it. I mean, I think if we can't, he really, really wants to do the Painsill because he's the banner of Painsill Legion in this area and he wants to showcase Painsill, which is awesome. If we can do it, I think he'll probably have to bring that to St. Martin, um, since they do have lights on the baseball field and can probably handle it and sell beer. Um, I think he's going to do it either way, but boy, it would sure be a, it'd be a great way to kick off this, this grandstand and, you know.
I think before we do anything else, we've got to find out if it's legal. Because at no point are we not pumped up. And like you, I mean, this has been being kicked around for a while. And again, I've heard both sides, but as time goes on, I'm hearing more that it's not legal. It has to do with federal funding and whether it's legal or not, if it's going to cut off any funding from us.
We understand.
That's the stuff I want to know before the discussion goes.
We, we have pressure going today. I want to know that question too, so. So, I would agree, that is something that we do need to find out whether it is possible or not possible. And like I said, I have talked to superintendents about this and I have even from superintendents, I've gotten different answers on, on whether it is or not. We do have a couple of places that, um, we believe are doing it, but, but that's correct. That's as being legal and that doesn't mean there isn't a price to be paid, but I, I do not have the information for the board right now. Um, but I do know it'll take me a little bit of time. I do think it's something that we should get the answer to as quick as we can, because even after we get the answer to that, if we get the answer and it's no, I think that's pretty cut and dry. But if you get the answer and it's yes, there is a legal way to do it, I think there's still a lot of discussion to be had at that point. So, that's the desire of the board, I'll sort of move that way.
As we look at this, it's kind of a community event. So, it kind of looks like it happens to be ending up on our property. Um, lots of stadiums are on city property, but in this event, it was the best location for it. So, it would seem like the coordination of your group, potentially the city council and us, maybe how we have to coordinate to be able to potentially do an event. And I know the city, when we worked on ice arena a number of years ago, cities have ability to do things that nobody else does. And, um, coordination with them sometimes could accommodate some of that, but just something we may need to not try and do it all ourselves. A whole bunch of people investing money, it's a community event, happens to be on our property for our team. It's a great deal for them to play in a fancy stadium and everything, but it's still a Painsill, I don't know, maybe, um.
Well, you still have to answer, I mean, it's a philosophical question. Do you want to sell alcohol on school grounds, which is an alcohol-free facility? I mean, it's the, the philosophy behind that. And I talked with other superintendents just to get their take, there were some that said you can't, cannot absolutely do it. There were a couple that said, we believe there's a way and that's all, we got some of the names that we got about that. And then there's some, I mean, they had, had a couple that said, if there's a way, tell me so that I know. Um, so I, I just, the answers were all over the board when I, when I did my quick check on, on this piece. But again, I, at that point, then I moved on to other things because it didn't look like that this particular piece was going to come up right away, so.
Well, so I know if we can, if we can have a conversation for sure, yes.
Yeah, because then that's when the discussion will really start.
But I think we're, I mean, we need to move fairly quickly on this.
Yep. That's what, I mean. Okay, thank you guys.
Thank you for coming in. All right, this is number one on the business. Do you consider approval of the corporate food service bids and all of the areas? Area bids and.
Yeah, it then pretty much gives you, um, the information on that. Both bids were lower than last year, but there's certainly some expectations and all are much different than what we had because of the new food regulations. Um, and one piece, we only had one bidder, um, that was for the camps for the, um, the area. And the other one we had two, but one of those did not need specifications of the bid. So, I would suggest we take those two.
Or we have any choice.
Not unless I read it. And I prefer not to do that because I don't think I'll get any more bidders than what we did hit, so I would rather win than we approve this.
Second motion to that, second, approved. Any further discussion? Hearing the halls and papers, same as I. All same sign. Motion carries. Number two, do you consider approval of the middle high school, that could be handled in 13, 14 school.
And just a little bit of information with the board, uh, before I turn this over to the principals for these discussions, uh, I just want you to be aware that we have to cut down the number of trees for this in the future. And I did primarily because I had new board members here that hadn't really seen the handbooks, but in the future, I would much rather send you an electronic version, not cut down the trees just with the, the changes that occur so that we can, we can save the resources that we have. Like I said, with three new board members, I thought the need to give actual copies off this time, uh, I don't know how you are, but I don't particularly like reading that log of an article necessarily on there, but I think we need to make that transition. So, in the future, you'll probably see this differently. If you have any feelings about that, give me a call, but next year, I would like to send electronic versions of this. And if you want to print it home, you can print it home, but it won't be our resources then.
Could I just ask that if you send just the changes, they put up what it was next, right next to what it, what it's going to be? Because sometimes if you, you just get a list of pieces of the changes and you're sitting there with the book going through, trying to find where that fitting here?
Yeah.
You could just, that would be great.
Yeah, there would be no reason why we couldn't just put the changes, attach it to their copy and.
And did you like that X out or, or whatnot within the document?
Oh, yeah.
You know, like the editing piece? So, then when we would actually put it online and have that, but you guys would see, you know, or maybe do whatever, something great.
And we'll still have to have a copy here, but that would still save the number of trees, so.
No, we can certainly do that. Um, in this one, obviously the new school schedule on the second page, uh, that has passing times and all of that that we didn't talk about. Uh, the second page, that number four, you'll see in bold print, uh, just that we are going to continually on a yearly basis, um, check and double check through our PLCs that we are continually realigning our curriculum and it is an expectation and it's something every teacher is going to be responsible for using the data to get back their testing, looking at their curriculum. You'll see in number four where it's folded. Um, and then if you will jump to, um, lesson plans, this one is alphabetical. There's not numbers on the page, but you'll see kind of contract for making up incomplete and then on the next page, there's a lesson plans. Um, that the class syllabus, et cetera, is expected to be on their website. Last year was the first year that we encouraged teachers to have the website, et cetera. Um, it is something that is going to be expected this year, that the, their websites will be up and running by the end of September with the syllabus, et cetera. So, last year was kind of our learning year for that. Um, and then if you will jump ahead to the Ps, uh, the professional learning communities, that's something again, we started last year on kind of a trial basis. Um, it will be expected this year that every teacher is expected to be participating and attending all the PLC meetings and what they're doing during those PLCs. Um, that has to do with curriculum work and we're going to be doing a bookstore study on Marzano's teaching strategies as well this year. So, that's a couple of things that will be going on in those PLCs, okay? Um, then if you jump to the back schedules, you'll see that look like this. It's our detention and bus room duties or bus and lunchroom, et cetera, with the change in advisory time. Uh, this used to be a start time of eight o'clock, they had to begin their duties. Um, assuming that kids will be here a little bit earlier, most likely, although kids were here earlier last year. So, I did have teachers just automatically start, starting their duties earlier, that I actually put it in there that their duties will start at 7:50 versus eight o'clock. So, if they're supervising the lunchroom for breakfast, they're there at 7:50 instead of eight o'clock, because that's when kids are here. It's become a, a very social time and, um, it's nice to have a teacher in there outside of the electric staff because they're busy serving breakfast and those things. So, those are the changes in here at this time. Any questions that you might have?
When do they get handed up?
Um, I do this during our faculty meeting, um.
Before, before school?
Right before school. Oh, and there was one other one in, I don't know where it was, but JMC in the past, it was expected that teachers update their grades every two weeks. This year, they have to update their grades weekly. We have found that, um, parents are definitely using the website and they want more input than a bi-weekly update. Some teachers do it every day. Um, some teachers like English have longer projects, uh, but there has to be an update and a grade in there on a weekly basis, even if it's just a participation grade. Um, some of our CTE classes like Land Trans, Fayette, they take participation points, but they would like add them up, you know, every two weeks and put it in there. And you're going to expect that that's done on a weekly basis this year, because parents are looking for that input to help their kids be successful. Any other questions? Or additions that the board would like to see before? Okay, thank you.
And motion approved, the other two. Okay, we're about to motion approve, second, Sheriff. Any further discussion? Hearing the halls and papers, same as I. All same sign. Motion carries. Number three, do you consider building a school at St. Mary's? 13, 14 school here.
Uh, you should have a copy of the, of your handbook changes, mostly this year, um, cosmetic, updating staff, revising schedules. Um, we are going to have a master, large master calendar in the office this year so that staff can write on there when there, if there's a special field trip or anything like that. That's really, um, about all the additions that we made this year in, uh, in the handbook. Any questions on any of those changes? Any questions on any of those changes?
Okay, any questions that have been motion approved? So, second motion to approve, need further discussion? Here you're on all of the papers, you can either say aye.
Aye.
Both say aye. Motion carries. Number four, do you consider approval of the student parent handbook for the 13th, 14th school?
This handbook was revised considerably last year. We streamlined our attendance and requirements and things like that. So this year, what we did is I just added something about non-school groups with flyers and things in school. We get a number of organizations and we're really just gonna, we'll post those in certain areas of the school. We added some information from our school nurse, which was also added to the high school handbook last month. And really just updated staff and supervision schedules this year.
I do have a question on this one. This is given to the students and parents?
Yes.
Okay, so we had a discussion at a meeting or two ago about some of the disciplinary things and maybe looking at rewriting some stuff. And we talked about an unabridged version, if you could count that, a complete version of disciplinary things in the, on the computer. Does it reference that anywhere in here for somebody that if they have an issue? I was trying to read as much as I could through the disciplinary part, and it talks about some of the legal codes and stuff. But it doesn't really say, if you have more questions and want to read policy, go to this part of the website and it's here.
The example would be bullying policy. The district's actual discipline policy, bullying policy.
Those are on, those are on the website, but I don't have the reference.
Right, but that's, that was the question.
Yeah, and I just wondered if you have this out to them, if the parents at least had an idea of where to go for additional information. Because sometimes if you take bullying, for example, first off, the definition is an interesting one. And identifying is an interesting one, but we have it all written up, but then we don't have it anywhere for somebody to read. But if we had a reference to tell them where to go to find the information, or if they don't have computer access, to stop into the district office and get a copy or do that as well.
Yeah, and there wouldn't be any reason that we couldn't just take the district policies that pertain to these things and attach them right next to where we keep electronic versions for the parents.
Or just in your, say, reference packet and they're not putting something in two places on the website.
You have a one?
Okay.
Any other questions about that?
I'd like to make a note that we approved that, but put something in there so people know where to go find stuff on the website.
Go second.
Okay, we will motion approve that change.
So you want them this year to make that change?
Yeah, just maybe a sentence or two. Shouldn't be a too big a deal and just say, if you want more detailed information about the discipline policy or our policies, here's where you go.
I'm assuming, because we've already printed these things, so I'm assuming.
No, we're printing, because otherwise you could print that one statement, stainless.
Yep, okay.
We can get those in there.
Do you have that one?
Yep.
All of the papers, you can either say aye.
Aye.
Both say aye. Motion carries. Number five, do you consider approval of the parent professional handbook for the 13th, 14th school?
This was the new handbook last year. And again, we are updating some information and also put our outdoor recess procedures in the parent professional handbook. It wasn't in there last year, but that policy hasn't changed, which is to put it in there so they have reference to it.
Motion approved, the parent professional book?
Second.
Second motion, sure, motion approved, second motion. Need further discussion? Here you're on all of the papers, you can either say aye.
Aye.
Both say aye. Motion carries. Number six, does that sound adequate? I'll come on superintendent if you have a question.
I guess from my point of view, we're starting my second year here for me. And I have told the board members all along that it is truly important that I be evaluated, that I find out the things that the board thinks I'm doing well and the things that the board also thinks that I need to improve on and continue to work on. So I guess we're at the point where I would like the board to have some discussion about this. And from my perspective, I would really like to have a timeline and how you're going to go about doing it. So I know that we really haven't talked about it as a board, and that's why I'm asking for some discussion at this point. Because like I said, it is important to me that this be done.
Does the Minnesota School Board Association give us some guidance?
They say they're kind of a, they're models of current evaluation, which is what we used in the past. And I guess I would suggest we boost people off that.
And I could certainly forward that to everybody if they would like that. It is on on the MSBA website, but I think there are two versions of it, I believe. So I could certainly forward those to you guys so that you can each take a look at it individually. There's nothing there.
And in the past, we have, I can't remember if I had a word, but we completed it and I think we closed.
You can do it, you can do it either way. Certainly you can close it, to tell you the truth. I'm fine with whatever the board decides to do. I don't have an issue whether it's closed or it's not closed. So I think that's up to the board on whether they want to go whichever route that the board feels comfortable doing it. But personally, I'm fine with either method, whether you want to close or you don't want to close. All I want to do is know is things that will be helpful to me.
Maybe we could just kind of set a timeline and if this is completed, I'm second in two weeks.
Well, the board will get to it because you'll have to decide then whichever form to use.
We're gonna have to, why don't we do the form and maybe next meeting, could we decide what form we're gonna use?
You could have the form here copied, and I could certainly have the copy for the people out here. You could decide and then determine how long it will take you to fill it all.
I don't think that's reasonable.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I just didn't, I wanted the process to continue.
So if we get the form selected, the next meeting and the following meeting, and the actual completed form done, maybe the next, maybe the next time we're close to evaluation.
And then if the board would mind, even during that discussion, as you look at this and we continue to have a discussion, whether that's the process we want to continue to use or whether we want to come up with something else, I can certainly check with a few other superintendents to see what they do so that the board can get a few options probably for the next one. I think this first one is probably as easy as we can get without spending too much time discussing it. But there may be other tools out there that would help the board more and also help me more, so.
So we'll select the next meeting and then next thing we'll decide, open or close, and then the actual evaluation.
That sounds good.
I don't know if you have a motion on that, do you?
No, this was just, I believe, I don't think we should have a motion on that. This is just more for informational, so we move the process on.
Okay. Any further items? Number seven, do you consider approval of taxes in the class meeting art standards for hands-on area schools?
And I'm going to let Lori take the lead on this.
I think Bob sent you the document that Tracy...
I just sent them a little information, I didn't send all the pictures and everything else.
I received the acceptable document.
I did not.
Okay, I did have Tracy come tonight. I was thinking that you did have the document. I can have Bob send that all to you tomorrow. And then maybe we'll put it back on the board agenda for next week. Or at the same time, I'll have Tracy go ahead and talk to that, that policy. What we need to do is the art standard is, can be, as long as all the standards that are part of the individual art credit are met within a class, the school board has the right to say this class will meet the art standard as long as there's board action on that class. So what Tracy has done is within his taxidermy class, which is a phenomenal class, and in the email that Bob will send out, it has pictures of some of the kids' projects and what they've done. You may have seen them in the hallways, on exhibits, or pictures of them as well walking in the building. Is he has met, it's kind of been a two-year project, has met with Mrs. Whaler. They have gone through all the art standards and he has aligned them with what he is doing in his taxidermy class. And so the class itself does meet those art standards within the science curriculum. So what I, I'll have Tracy kind of explain a little bit about that, answer questions. And what we're asking is for the board action to okay us to use the taxidermy class for kids to gain credit towards that art standard. Because they need four credits of art in order to get a hands-on diploma, okay?
And you worked on this in conjunction with their department, correct?
So Tracy, do you want to kind of maybe explain some of the projects, some of the things the kids do in your class?
These pictures I have, a ton of them, but the kids do an awesome job. I mean, if you look at some of the projects, first one, they're some deer hunting, so, sorry. They'll use, I've checked with Kelly on the things that she covers. And most of the things that she covers in a ninth grade art class are also covered in taxidermy. She's had kids that have taken taxidermy and then she kind of looks at their projects and then she's given them art credit in the past. So the passes kind of went through her. Now just the, I've talked with her. One thing I have to do is to kind of redo my evaluation process a little bit. Right now, it's not quite as formal. Should the taxidermy be... Yep.
This one?
Yep. First one might be some deer hunting ones. These are just, is what I try to do before everybody leaves. We're down to about six.
Oh.
Sorry. That's the daughter of you, she's outside working right now.
All right.
Keep going, just go to the bottom there, we'll go through some. It's all right, keep going, we're gonna get there.
That's a good deer though.
That's nice. Keep going, keep... Okay, this is a picture of Evan Byer. You're gonna see a variety of pictures that I have here. Sorry they're not in order, but this is just right off the camera. You can go ahead and click through pretty fast. This is the, some of the processes. Evan did this for another class that he was actually doing a PowerPoint for. So here he's showing skinning the bird, he's fleshing the bird. Then one of the next processes, they wash it, they're gonna end up sticking a plastic body in there. And a lot of times, they're gonna put it on some sort of a background or a media. And that's a, he's gonna tumble it, dry it. Sorry, you're getting a whole schmear here, you know, but that's him tumbling it. They tumble it in sawdust, take it outside and shake it. Looks terrible for a while. They're gonna put it in water, they'll put it in mineral spirits, and then eventually... Sorry, there we got some pictures. This is a former student that came in. He had a pheasant, back was terrible, absolutely terrible. Then is what he did, this student this past year, very, a highly motivated young individual. I bet she did about six or eight pictures. You can just fly through a bunch of them, this is a wood duck, she did a deer. That's one of the classes. I tried all of it, and I suppose it's kind of just something that I do. I'll get one group picture and then I get an individual picture. Try to do that with all of them. They're pretty creative on some of the stuff they do. They'll build a base for them, they put a piece of driftwood. Usually they steal the driftwood from me, the little dills, that I'm the best one that can find driftwood, and then they'll trade it with me or something. They'll bring in a fence post, they'll do something for me. Most of this, this is, young man, that's probably the best one of Wijen you'll see. You'll go to Shields, you won't see one next to it. This is a young man, a year ago, he may not have been so enthusiastic about school. This past year, it's just like clicked with him. I mean, look at the paramount, I mean, you won't find something better. This is what I mean by doing a base. So if you look at it, the bird on the bottom is his first bird. Later on, when he looked at it, he said, well, that's just unacceptable, it's not good enough. But it still looks pretty decent. Then you look at the top bird, I mean, it's just awesome. The wood down on the cap, we'll spend one day every ten, one not, every ten days. We'll go down there, just spend, take a wood day or something down and go down there. And then they make up the base for it. They're into it. This young man, later on in the spring, so we try to push it up until the last day. We're pushing to the last day this year, and there's some that are really having a hard time. They're, they know that it's crunch time, that they want to do another project. And one of them goes, well, Mr. P, I want, coming in tomorrow morning? I said, yeah, all right, what time? He goes, six thirty, I said, what do you know, it's a little bit early. He goes, seven? I said, deal. At seven o'clock in the morning, I have kids, I have six kids, I mean, one of them didn't even have a project. He came in for breakfast, he brought breakfast in. And the rest of them, they just sat there and they pounded out projects and stuff. It was just a kick. And then there's, I mean, imagine getting juniors and seniors here at seven o'clock in the morning, it's not a real treat. They came willingly. Good kids, you're seeing the whole schmear. I had like two or three on the packet that I sent to Mrs. Flora. This young man, he did different types of pheasants. He did a ringed pheasant, then he did a Hume's barb tailed, he did a lady embers. He did a golden pheasant, a red golden pheasant. I mean, they, it was just awesome, the things he did. There's his lady embers, very nice bird. Pretty tough to do, but awesome. As you keep going through, this is a whole different picture. I know it looks similar to the other one, but this is a whole different picture. Take a look at the lower right-hand corner, I'm sorry, right down in the middle. That pheasant, I mean, it was awesome. It was a three sixty, you could walk all the way around it, and there wasn't a better sign to it. Imagine a rooster pheasant in the spring on the side of the road, and you go by and they cackle at you, they crow at you. That's exactly what that, I mean, it makes you want to run him over right there. I mean, it just, it just, sorry, it looked good, it really did. I mean, usually we, they stay in class. Some of them are motivated kids, they can get a bird done in about two weeks. Some of them are gonna do them faster because they're gonna come in for school. They're gonna come in there studying. There's that pheasant right there. The picture doesn't do it justice. The piece of wood we put on, that's scrap lumber. I have a former student that, it's Jokum Spelders, they have the tree business. And they'll take some of the wood and they run it through their bandsaw. And then they'll, I'll talk to Jokum, he'll bring it in. It, like, this piece of wood is a little bit thinner. It wasn't a big, you know, thick piece of oak wood, but it looks awesome for something like this. Little bit thinner, it may, may work in time, but it's not something, it's not like you're gonna run your hand across and look at the table or something like that. There you can see these cat, I mean, it's very nice. And just the textures that they use, this is Devon Moners first, that's Max, is that your cousin Max or... That's not your brother's. But I mean, that's his first bird, I mean, his first pheasant ever. The amount of time they put in on it is really phenomenal. And this, like I said, I suppose I take one or two of each. Devon's first duck he did, he did one later on in the year. Devon's pretty particular on the stuff he does. He does a, did a golden eye that was absolutely great. I mean, just second to none, you won't find anything like Shields like it. I mean, it's, they do a phenomenal job. I took a picture of the back, so we needed to see what the, I want to show kids later on in the years how we do just like a head model of those birds and stuff. So I've checked with Kelly, we went through the stuff. Like I said, we've had kids in the past that have done projects and gotten art credit for it. And that's what the kids, you know, they kind of get after, come on, get this going, all right, come on. And I sent this up to you, I took all the art standards. So if you look at the sheet, I thought it was going on to you folks for today. I have all the art standards that are covered in Mrs. Whaler's ninth grade, what's it called, the...
Uh, design one.
Design one. And then off to the right, I put how, of the last column, is how I cover those standards in taxidermy. And so right at that, definitely we give them the art.
And Kelly and Tracy went through and did that, and I come through and double-checked it, and that's what you guys will receive when Bob sends that out to you. So we do cover the art standard. At the same time, it's a great fit because obviously you see we have students that are motivated. They're doing science in the art text. Kelly is working with Tracy to make sure that those stay in place. And we do have, if you look at our numbers that need art, we have more kids that signed up for art just because they need it to graduate. This is one way we can offer within our curriculum a class that can fulfill two of their requirements. You know, because we don't have enough art to give everybody that class. They can, those kids that love this and would take it anyway can take taxidermy and fulfill that art requirement as well. So not only is it a great offering for students, it also... So not only is it a great offering for students, it also allows us to be offering classes for kids and allow them the opportunity to get the requirements they need. So I guess what we're asking is if you feel comfortable approving that today, we'd love to have the approval for that, or we can bring it forward to the board on our next board meeting because it will still be before the year starts, for that approval to offer the taxidermy as an art credit for the local requirement.
And I did look at the stuff, and it looks very good. There's no doubt in my mind that it does appeal.
I've also been aware of kids that got projects, you know, that they did that went down and got it, like, I don't know what they called it, but Weyler looked at it and they got their, so.
I think it's, I think it's very good, and...
And I'm second it.
Okay, we have a motion, Bruce, I'd like that, to approve this class meeting air standards during further discussion. Hearing now all those papers, if others say aye?
Aye.
All same sign. Motion cares. Okay, number eight, do you consider approval to hire a person to help with technology initiatives?
This will be, the next two will be fairly quick. I'll give, I had this on my report at the end, but I might as well fill everybody in at this time. To tell you the truth, when I bring this up, I felt just like when I was, when I sent out all those little notices for counseling school, essentially we didn't know how to say it in a good manner. And I talked to some of you, and just to bring it up is that at least at this point, I projected that we have about 987 students. We are at this point 20 students less than that. So I'm just giving a heads up to the board at this point. I do think, I left these on the agenda because I do think that both technology person and the next item also are important. I think it's certainly something we need in the district. But after double-checking on my enrollment today, there is simply no way that I can recommend at this point that we won't refer to me reporting to the board that this is something that's important, that may come back to the board eventually. I think I would like to do a comparable work type of thing, any way to see if we did have this, where would it fall? So I have that information, so I'll probably move a little forward on that just to get that done. Because if it does come back eventually, I'd like to have that information to be able to share with the board before we were to act on anything. All right, so at least at this point, other than just informational because of the loss of students, at least right now, and it can change very rapidly, and I'll give more information on this at the end of my report, and I'll talk a little bit more about this at the end. But I would just, so at this point, just say, yep, we got information on it, but do not act on this.
Historically, what is the difference between now and school start in history? Lori, do you know?
Yeah, things can change rapidly.
Yeah.
Do we normally, I was gonna say, do we normally see an increase of 10 students? Do I normally see an increase of 15 students, or what do you see over the years?
I would say in the last three years, you have a coming and going that has been pretty comparable for our school district, the same number coming in as are going out, and it's primarily due to moving, you know, just family mobility.
My question actually is, picking now and beginning of...
It usually happens in August. It usually is the first two, three weeks in August. Usually by the third week in August, when we have our next board meeting, everybody, we have very few that shift that last week in August.
Because what's happening right now is when a student goes into another district, we don't find out about it until that student goes into that district, and the district sends us requests for information on that student for the, all the records. And then we know that they're gone. A lot of times we're not able to get a hold of even those students, because we don't have any contact information at that particular point. About half of the students that left, were students that have gone, or somehow have moved to Florida. Okay, so there's a number of those that either moved within the state or moved even out of the state, so they're just not in our district anymore.
And a lot of times families will wait to make that move until after the summer sports seasons are done, and then they'll move that beginning August and then they'll...
So specifically, do we have any idea from registration last year till the first day of school, what happened to the numbers of registration?
Well, last year we gained students.
Last year we gained.
So how did it end the year before that, do you recall? That's what I was kind of curious.
We could go back, I think we were pretty...
The year before, I think we were low also, at least when the entire...
When it started?
Yeah.
And when school started, it was still low?
Yeah.
But was it, was it low though that year because of the mobility of kids or just their kindergarten class coming in was smaller than senior class going out?
A big hit with this, even this year, is that we have 11 less kids, no, even a little bit more than that because we didn't get to where we thought we went. Right now I think we're at 6-6, but there were 11 more kids in the graduating class. So that's part of it, but that's what I based my prediction on. So those were already accounted for in my prediction, or my estimate, but we have just had a number of students leave. And there are some that we're talking, you know, we're talking to families now to see what's going on, and we've made contact with some of the families, but we weren't able to make contact with all of the families to give reasons why. They were looking elsewhere, and there's various reasons for that.
Do we have leads come in when somebody new moves to town? Or say somebody moves to town that give you an idea that they've arrived where, or we can have somebody say, welcome?
I had three tours last week through families, so we do have, I have three questions on my desk right now.
A lot of times we'll have businesses, I guess the hospitals have what have been the most for is where the hospital will say, you know, "We have so-and-so is looking at a possible job here, can you do a tour?" Or could they, you know, walk around the campus, et cetera. We have several businesses that will just call us, and then we'll take them on tours, and we really appreciate that. That's probably our biggest lead to new families coming in. So I know we, you know, we love to do tours to new people coming in and to kind of showcase our school and our programs.
Well, it seems that, you know, I hate to just ignore those, eight, nine, maybe she's looking at me and we get more concrete numbers.
Well, and things could change rapidly between now and the start of the school year.
What I just need to hear, you should look at, I must get five numbers.
Yes, I, that's, for now, I just do not feel comfortable going any further with this one and the next one, quite frankly, because of that. Until we get a solid number on there, gain some back. If our numbers would have stayed the same, I think we would have had a good chance to move forward on this type of thing, but with the change, I just don't feel comfortable going any further.
So we'll just not act on those at this point, and we'll kind of handle here. Okay, number 10, do you consider approval of change to B schedule for the 13th fourth school year?
And that changes the...
Pardon?
The B schedule, what's the change?
Oh, the B schedule itself, the only change to the B schedule, it might, I'm just thinking the procedural, whether they need to do that on an individual item, or they can do that. If there's no action, I assume that we can just pass or go, so eight, nine, or nine and eight, yeah, eight, nine. So I would just...
What do you think?
Yeah. The B schedule really was, is that we didn't assume this would happen, but it was really, when we got the information back from the state and the feds, we had to raise the fees for just the breakfast for adults. It's not something we foresaw that we would need to do, but they did request a, no, you wanna call a request, that we raised it on a dime, so that's, that's the only change to the fees of that adult breakfast fees went up a dime. But it is a change, so we wanted to make sure that we had it.
I'll second it.
Motion to move it down, a second to Cheryl, in further discussion. Hearing now all those papers, if others say aye? All same sign. Motion cares. Number one, do you consider approval of six class assignments for the 12th, 13th school year?
Yeah, just mentioned that these were built in, these are not in addition, all right? These were already put in place when we had talked about the budget and all that, so I just wanted to make the board and the community aware that we did not add anything from what we had figured that we would have. In fact, it is fewer sixth grade classes than they have in the last few years, so.
No move? Motion to move. Second to down, so we should continue for discussion. Hearing now all those papers, if others say aye?
Aye.
All same sign. Motion cares. Number two, do you consider approval of resignation request for Cheryl Shuminsky, effective September 1st, 2013?
Just for the Vidic Center, and we certainly want to thank them for all their service that they have resigned.
So...
Motion, Cheryl.
Yeah.
Second to down, in further discussion. Hearing now all those papers, if others say aye? All same sign. Motion cares. Number three, Vidic Center employer, Jackie Schoolman, designing effective August 23rd, 2013.
And again, we just want to thank for all their service.
I'm not pulling.
Motion to move it down, a second to move, in further discussion. Hearing now all those papers, if others say aye? All same sign. Motion cares. Number four, do you consider approval of hiring Jerome Hurst for current first food service worker adding 4.6 hours per day for the 6.5 hour day, cook position vacated by Don Bauer, effective for the 13th, 14th school year?
Just as it says, this is really a developed position that for returning.
So move.
Okay, motion to move, a second to Cheryl, in further discussion.
Yeah, I just, just a quick question. So she's filling in with 4.6 hours to a 6.5 hour day?
There's no change in the number of hours that we're adding for that, she just gets more hours.
The person who retired, and so then everybody below who has less hours kind of shuffles up.
Well, not necessarily.
Sometimes.
Sometimes that occurs. What we want to do is we want to offer the position to the most qualified candidate. It's great if it's one of our employees, that would be wonderful. If it's not, then we do want to still offer to the most qualified candidate. And the next one is an example of that.
So you're saying even a lot of reads, like, they have a reduction of the amount of candidates?
There is no reduction. We are, in the next two pieces, all we are is break it even.
Okay, gotcha.
That's it.
Okay, all those papers, if others say aye? All same sign. Motion cares. We're fine, do you consider approval of hiring Katie Wally, who will be taking Marilyn's position for 4.6 hours per day, effective 13th, 14th school year?
And after doing the interviewing, and because this, you know, that piece, one moves, and now there's another opening. So we did open the position to internal candidates and external candidates, and the committee did pick that individual as the person that best matched the position.
Was she internal or external?
She was external.
No move? Any motion to move?
Second.
Second to Cheryl, in further discussion. Hearing now all those papers, if others say aye? All same sign. Motion cares. Number six, do you consider approval of hiring Emily Sackrider?
Yes.
Sackrider as a long-term substitute for one year, Spanish she gave up as a student in 13th, 14th year, contingent upon her receiving the required variance.
If board members are in the addendum, it talks about that on April 9th, you approve Amy Jo, poor lady teacher, take one year leave upon paid absence for the 2013, 14th school year. But that leave was contingent upon us finding a qualified person. This particular person, as you're gonna read, is licensed in 512 social studies, but she has a Spanish major, which would, or a Spanish minor, which would not normally be what we would look for for this position. But we did do a lot of work, and I know, Lori, if you want to fill in, they did a lot of work at high school to verify that we believe she is qualified to take this position for a year, but I'll let Lori explain.
I asked Dave Wokey because Emily having seven years of language experience and a minor, her college didn't offer a Spanish major, that's gonna live her minor K in. I asked Dave Wokey to come in and do a skills test that looked at both writing skills as well as language skills, and he felt very confident with where her level, her level of skill was to teach the classes that she would be teaching, which is our seventh grade Spanish, our first year Spanish students, and our second year Spanish students, as well as our ELL. And then I also had Amy Jo and him in on the interview process, both looking at, she was our only applicant for the process, but she came in and did an interview, and I actually asked her to do a dialogue during that interview as well, and listened to how that dialogue went between her and our Spanish teachers. And I do believe she will do a very good job. She has subbed a lot in our district, across the board, and we have teachers requesting to have her come in. I know students work very hard when she is subbing in different areas and they get their work done. So I feel she will do a good job for our district and for our students in this. And this would allow Amy Jo to finish up her ESL licensure, which right now, she, this wouldn't have been her last year in order to have a variance for that position, and then we'd have to look for something else down the road. So I guess our language department feels this is a very, is a qualified person to take on that position. I will have to, if you do approve her on the contingency of the variance, I will have to apply for variance, and if the state approves it, then we would move forward with it. If they wouldn't, then Amy Jo knows she would be teaching this year, and we would continue to look for possibly next year for a candidate.
Do I have any first choices?
Yes, yeah. That turnaround time is less than a week usually now.
And it's much more like trying now than it used to be.
No move?
Second.
Motion to move it down, a second to Cheryl, in further discussion. Hearing now all those papers, if others say aye? All same sign. Motion cares.
And Lori, you'll get right on that, very, it's a...
Yep.
Number seven, do you consider approval of maternity leave from Mary Ryan, that her from approximately the 5th, 2013, to, sorry, 18th, 2013? Motion, Cheryl, second to the column, in further discussion. Hearing now all those papers, if others say aye?
Aye.
All same sign. Motion cares. Okay, finish, Lori.
Uh, as you were, we had registration earlier this week. It went very well, went very smoothly. I think pictures even was more, I guess, more spaced out, families came in more spaced out. We had more families come in the second day, I felt, as well as Connie, and giving out schedules. One of the other comments that Connie mentioned and I saw in the office is, students were very happy with their schedules. We had minimal schedule changes. We did more new student intake than we've done in the past. Usually we don't have time to do that. So we feel that students are happy with the curriculum and how the schedule laid out because we're not having to do a lot of schedules changes, et cetera. So we're kind of excited about that. Now, that could totally flip around on the first day of school when they walk through their classes, but we'll see. So I say that kind of with a little conservatively. One thing with the Spanish position, you may be aware, it was the year for the Spanish trip. We do have less than six students that are interested in the trip. And one thing that now agencies that are doing these student trips are encouraging their language teachers or their teachers to do is to do it independent of the school. So Amy Jo has decided that with the five students that are interested, she is looking at still taking them on the school trip. There is no sub-cost for the students because she's not teaching this year, but the liability will all fall on the company and her independence of the school district. So we are not involved at all, it's just the parents have decided to allow the kids to go on a Spanish trip with her. So it's not connected with the school in any way, but our Spanish students that want to go on this trip will have the opportunity to go on the trip. But we didn't have, we kind of set as a number out there that for the school to sponsor it as a school program, they had to have at least six students that went for us to justify the teacher being out of the classroom for that length of time.
Are they still gonna be fundraising and all that stuff through the school? Just as if, I mean, the only difference is the liability then?
Yeah, they would be fundraising through Amy Jo, just like trail guards do, you know, so they can fundraise and ask parents, but it wouldn't be considered a school fundraiser or... but it wouldn't be considered a school fundraiser or won't run through the school paperwork. So it would like be like your Girl Scouts and your Boy Scouts, et cetera.
Does it be during the school year?
Um, it's over Christmas. They do miss two days of school. Uh, it will be excused because it will fall under that the way we have changed the vacation. You know, parents can write a note and say, I would like to excuse my child for a vacation. So the students will miss two days of school. It will come against them as an excused absence. But it's not a, a school field trip. Okay. The band meetings went very well. We had those on Thursday. We met with the, Mr. Milton had a meeting with just the seniors. Um, and then he had one with all the returning band members and then one with the sixth grade or the sixth grade parents that are interested. At this time, we're still going to work a little more on recruiting some more sixth graders. If they don't know a lot about band, we're coming up with some ideas for that. Uh, but the meetings went very well. Uh, I was excited to see the enthusiasm that the students kind of walked out of the, the meetings. Um, and Mr. Milton is starting to put schedules together and those kinds of things. So I think we're off to a good start. Uh, any, that's all I have. Any questions that you might have for myself?
When you talk about the number of students and the Spanish trip, do you attribute some of the numbers to economic conditions?
Very much so.
So if so, do we ever look at things that maybe don't include flying somewhere and all that, like a bus trip down to Mexico? Where there's parts of Mexico that aren't full of... But, but we're hearing about a lot of the differences. There are areas of Mexico that are really pretty decent or... But you know, I, I'm just curious if, if it was more political without all the airfare and all the other things stacked with it, if you'd have more participation.
Yeah, it, it, it can be difficult though because my father went to Juju to all to those border areas. All right. And I know that in the last few years, he wasn't even crossing the border for any reason.
The hard part is getting the nice parts. You have to drive through the...
To get to the areas that I would feel safe or feel comfortable with our students going there, um, I think you only can...
And then you also have the timeframe when you're looking at going during the school year, if you're going to drive down there as well. You're tacking on, you know, probably four to six more days that the kids are missing out on classes and they...
I don't know. Participation is a four thousand dollar shot per kid compared to a, on eight hundred dollar shot per kid. Could there be a way to make that work?
We do do some other things during the school year. We participate down at the Minnesota Zoo in Language Day, which is a great cultural experience for both our German and Spanish students as well as there are some competitions that take place on St. John's campus that our students go to as well as just a day during, during the school year. So those are some smaller things, but I can also bring that to the attention of our language department, have them look into it. But I do think there's some other factors that we'd want to consider.
Oh, I think you have to consider everything, just like when they're flying overseas, there may be those, some of those issues going on, you don't even know because it doesn't hit the news. Um, it's like, um, we can talk about a, a large city where it seems like it's horrible, but everybody's really comfortable living around there as long as you stay in the right area. So I, my only thought was the number of students participating and if the economic conditions are such, there are methods to make it more cost-effective so they still have a good time. They still have a, an experience, especially with Spanish because a lot less goes by and maybe doesn't cost much for a child or per student, I should call it.
I'll bring, I'll bring it up to our language department because they're always looking and, and checking into different things. And I do feel the, the economic situation and the cost of the trip is a big part of it. They do have two years that they fundraise, you know, because it's like every two years that the students are getting ready for the trip. Uh, so we do provide some of that fundraising, those fundraising opportunities, so.
Okay. Uh, thanks Lori. And Dave, what's your view?
Um, well, it's been a, actually a pretty quiet summer. Tomorrow, our leadership, elementary leadership team will be in St. Cloud for a meeting and resource to train us on how to be a good leadership team and things like that. And then on Thursday, that leadership team will, will be at the elementary and will be writing our school improvement plan and getting that submitted. Otherwise, I don't have a whole lot other than, you know, registration. I thought went, went well and anytime I can keep the phone calls at a minimum for, for their teachers, I think is a good thing. So, um, that's about all I have. Any questions?
Dave, you just talked to me about that. I just had a teacher contact me.
Yeah, I contacted that.
Perfect. Thank you.
Uh, Matt, can you be...
Oh, we had a really good, busy, active summer, great, great participation, a lot of new programs. Um, our fall brochure will be mailed out this Saturday, so look for that in your mailboxes. Uh, you probably noticed I recently launched a new school website. That was a full redesign, so there, it still is a work in progress. It's, something's back and, but I'm open to your feedback. I did a survey out. This new site is a lot more versatile for tablets and different browsers and, and those are all our kids for the pictures on there and we'll, you know, keep cycling those through. I really tried to simplify it, you know, no tabs and dropouts. So I just tried to go with, you know, elementary, if you're an elementary parent or, you know, to go to that page, secondary school, district wide, so... But I'm very open to, you know, different feedback and, you know, so if you see things that we want differently or could work there, so... But that's something new and, and continued work in progress.
Should have given us a heads up. Scared the crap out of me. I thought I did something wrong.
Let's do this. Let's do it. Yeah, so, um... It is changed though, but it's much better, especially with the new browsers now with IE ten and a lot, you know, a lot of that stuff that, um, you know, we needed to upgrade, so. We're sad to lose Jackie and Cheryl in the fitness center. Jackie's going away to school. Cheryl's got some family things to kind of work with and they're just huge assets, so. But we have some great news with the fitness center. We just found out this week that we are soon to be Silver Sneaker Provider. So which, yeah, we just talked about. We've been working on that, I think, close to five years to try to get them in our facility, so. Um, we're really excited. We'll have a lot of paperwork and things to do, but that should be a huge benefit to us with our demographics, our population. I know we have at least two hundred eligible within ten miles of our facility and that would be free memberships for them. We get reimbursed for the visits that they come, so. We're very excited about that. We've had a lot of our members continue to call, our insurance brokers and town call. So we bugged them enough that they're going to add. We did that with Medica and Health Partners and so it just takes time, but we're very excited about that, so. Any questions?
That's pretty cool.
Yeah, we're very excited. Thank you.
Thanks. Um, Monday was second fall sports, so I have the numbers for volleyball, football, cross country. I didn't print them off because I wanted to get all the conference numbers of our schools again, just to have something to compare it to. But, um, we're up from three to ten cross-country students this year, so that was good to see. Uh, otherwise, I'm just getting ready for a diet of popcorn and soda for the next seven months. We'll start up. I'm not going to hand these out, but if you want to look at it, we sent it to State High School League and got free tickets for all of our events this year. Kind of neat. Not that we spend millions of dollars on tickets or anything, but they're for free, so. Um, we got that. And then the Micah Knights, uh, which is led by Michael Putsky and Jonah's part of it and Jonah played a big role in it. I've done some upgrading to our sound system in our gymnasium for microphone. We've had a cordless microphone that had been cut out during events and sound system clipping and stuff like that. And they took care of all of that, so that was really nice. So I'm just gearing up for August thirtieth will be our first home event, will be a football game. I think it's September fifth will be our first volleyball or match, I should say. It'll be off the ground, so. Any questions?
So you're telling me my teens are going to start this period?
Mine for sure, so.
All the bikes.
Hey, Bob, any further?
Um, we had already talked a little about enrollment, enrollment issues, so I kind of already covered that. Do be aware that MSBA right now is taking nominations to the delegate assembly. And I think you have done this before, if I'm not mistaken. Have you go aboard it a little bit? So it's not a board action where you nominate somebody. I would just like to, you know, because when I open it up and I do do the nomination pieces, I just click on buttons. I could nominate one or all the way down, I think, all the board members, but...
The MSBA delegate assembly, uh, whole state or all the schools are broken up. I think there's twenty-three to twenty-seven districts or areas and they each have four to five representatives. And what happens is they have a pre-delegate assembly meeting in, in local areas and the representatives from each one of those meets the delegate assembly. What they do is you get a three-ring binder. It's got all the proposals that, um, the school districts send in that they want the MSBA to lobby for. It's basically what it is. In the back of the book is called the pink sheet. It's up with the, um, their like charter, their rules, what they're already standing for. And if any changes to that goes through this whole process and gets voted on at the delegate assembly. And the delegate assembly, it used to be, it's changed now. It used to be on a Sunday night. They went in Sunday night and met the legislature and they gave you their pitch on what was going on, what was happening down there or what they had heard, what's going to be brought up. Um, and then you, the vote itself was held on Monday. Now they've switched it to a weekend, so they get a better turnout. But, um, anybody can, any school board can bring forward a resolution that they want the MSBA to push at the, at the legislative level. And then if you bring a res, the resolutions are all brought down to the board or to the delegate assembly. Whoever, whatever school district brought it forward to them, a representative from them, or sometimes they'll have somebody just from a neighboring district. Somebody has to bring it to them, podium, speak to it and then there's a vote on it. And it, the whole process takes about pretty, pretty much the whole day, one day. And the night before, like you said, we have politicians, usually whoever's trying to lobby for the best seat on the education board or whatever.
Is this for rules, changes to it?
Nope. Um, it's all, it, rules within the MSBA itself. We, we know.
That's what I mean.
If you, if you wanted to change within the MSBA organization itself, you could also bring that there.
How do you move up that same procedure?
Resolution, yeah.
In fact, this, this is in a, the correspondent superintendent from Holyport who is kind of coming out with a little bit of a platform type of thing about funding to, um, schools that are less than two thousand students, thousand or less, and that might fit very well into the board. So I may bring something back to board and say, is this something that we should have our delegate move forward from our region or whatever it may be, so. So I guess I would like to know who would be interested or somebody wants to nominate other people, just so that I can get that particular piece taken here.
I have been for quite some time, since Maury was around, for those of you that are Maury. Um, but, um, it is very interesting. I would be interested in doing it again, but I would be more than glad to step down to let someone else do it if they wanted to.
Is it normally one person in the whole school board?
You can, you can nominate, you can nominate as many people as you want. What happens now is the neighbor put in. They used to do them at the regional meetings and it kind of went, this is how I got on. If you weren't there, you got nominated. Because it, um, the pre-delegate assembly for our area is, has, is on a Wednesday night and it's in Little Falls. It's been like that forever. And then, like you said, it's always a weekend down in the cities. And so it's, uh, it's a lot of material to read through and then you have to listen to a lot of, because some of them... When you stop to think about how big the MSBA is and all the people that it represents, for everything that would be really good for us would be really bad for somebody down in the cities. So you will have lines of people at the microphones. This is the best thing since sliced bread. That's going to kill us. You absolutely can't do that, no. And it goes back and forth. And some resolutions I've seen, or there'll be just one word in there that a couple of English teachers are going to argue about, so they'll have to change it. And then they'll change it again. And then, and every time you, uh, vary it, it has to go through the whole entire vote. You have to vote on the amendment and then the amendment of the amendment. And so sometimes it gets, uh, long, but, but it is interesting and it is...
So my point, anybody interested to nominate somebody?
I don't need that.
Already written that down. Did anybody else want to be nominated at this point?
Oh, I started... Everybody's nomination goes in and then, um, they do the meetings and so it was voted there. If you weren't there, everybody voted for you. Well, now, I think in the past, they sent out a ballot to everybody that's sitting on a board because you have to be sitting on the board, obviously, in the MSBA delegate assembly. So then everybody, you can vote for... You don't have to have somebody from your board. You might decide you want three from Melrose. And so, or it's, um, the table that I, that our area sits on, there's more often, there's been two there from Melrose, just about as long as I can remember, so.
Anybody else interested? Okay, um, policy committee has been meeting. We've, we've been doing a lot of discussion about gathering community input at starting meetings or even during the meetings. So I'm putting that policy together. I have a few questions for the policy committee that I want to just pulse off them before we bring it to the board. And then at that point, I will probably send it to the board with, with the agenda and all that information so that you can start reading it. And then that's when the discussion will, will take place at the board for the whole complete board to see it. But I will let the, all the board members see it before the board meeting so that they're aware. Again, it's not a matter of discussion. Just you're going to need some time to process what's been added or changed. All right. Various groups negotiating right now, so still a lot, a lot of work to do in that area. Recommission of the bill and just be aware, we did get a second bid. UHL was a little bit lower at this point, but I do want to do a little bit more comparing the two pieces that I have to make sure that we're kind of looking at apples to apples before we go down that road, but we did get a second bid on that. Closer than I thought they would be, but still UHL is a little bit lower. However, we're going to start to put, talk with, Matt, we're going to start putting the agendas on the board or in the section where the board minutes are at. Excuse me. So I think we envision board agendas, then board minutes, that type of thing. At least we're going to start with that, possibly addendum on that to start that process so that the committee can go there and take a look at it. Uh, we're going to hope to have that in place for the next meeting. We'd like to run that for a while and then we'll talk about whether we want to make any changes to it. But we'd like to get that up and running first. So just be aware that that is coming. Uh, we keep working about, you know, getting ready things for school. And, you know, I think everybody's still now, you know, we're in August. You know, we can see the start coming. So it is coming. Just be aware, I had sent you all just quickly, you know, just to tell you that we are going to have Yolanda Stroh coming in on September ninth at eleven o'clock. I would like, I don't want a committee, I just want a couple of board members to be there. She's coming in, uh, in response to the reservation. She had planned to come in earlier. They canceled that. She had an operation that she had to undergo and now she's coming in on September ninth. So if you're interested, let me know. But again, I don't want to come close to a forum. Just want a couple of board members there, maybe the ones that have the most background information on that reserve center would be helpful. Because she's going to come in, she's going to take a look at what we're using it for or what we're not using it for at this particular point, why we're doing what we're doing. So that's going to happen every three years. So it's on a three-year cycle.
And now what can, can you bring somebody large?
Yes.
Such as, um, the previous board member, number four. Probably know more about anybody else.
Oh, I think, I think it's fine. They're, they're not coming in to, for anything other than... other than to have a discussion about how it's been using. Certainly, Donnie will be there to help talk about what we're using the buildings for and to talk about that.
I think I've contacted you already about this.
Yep. So like I said, I just want to make sure that all the board is aware of it and don't want too many there. I just want a couple of people there so that we can represent the district. We already talked about the facility that we're building, Storm Shelter. The test scores aren't released really in a good format until, well, they're really the state here. I've never understood this. There's no doubt in my mind that the state has everything ready to go and why we don't have it in our hands so that we can share them with teachers and start planning on how it works up, I will never understand, other than it being political. But once they get released, then we will bring Donnie again and we'll talk about that. You should get a heads up that right now, I think, is a 20% drop that they're looking at statewide.
Yeah, the reading test showed about a 20% drop statewide.
It is a new way to test.
The difference of the reading test, it's not apples to apples. And there are lots of changes in accountability that the students will need in the whole testing piece, as well as what schools will be doing. And we'll be bringing that information to you after we have a chance to look at all the details in what the new statutes are showing. So we'll have a more lengthy presentation of that down the road. We just received some of that information, so we're getting together on Thursday to go through it.
We have some numbers and how some of the students have done, but it's really difficult to get comparison unless we also have the state averages on where everybody else is coming in to see how we are, at least in comparison to the rest of the students in those age groups. So the board will certainly be getting more information on that. Transportation, I did mention board members that we did have a van used by an outside agency. That van did go exceedingly fast. I mentioned that to board members. Just wanted to let the board be aware that I am no longer going to let outside agencies use our vans. We're covered by insurance. That's not the problem. The problem is really the liability that leaves the district open for. If you have any feelings on that, give me a call. We can talk about it. But I do have some strong feelings about the fact that I think this is really a liability that we just cannot open our doors for. We just can't. If anything would have happened during that time, we would remember that event for a long time, not only because some tragic may have happened, but because we'll also have a lot of that will go on, you know, and on. So unless you have the strong feelings, that is my intent to not let outside organizations use our vans at this point. We've also talked with Donnie to make sure that we come up with, kind of tightening up the garage piece ourselves for who are using it, make sure that we check them out right. We record everything that we need. Donnie gets all the information that he needs, that all our drivers are trained in what they need to have before we allow them, from coaches to teachers or any other staff that uses a van.
What is required to be a driver of one of our vans?
If you're on permanent road, you need a DOT license, or, yeah. You need to go through the, we've got a PowerPoint that you have to go through. We need your driver's license, a current driver's license. As of right now, we have, we'll have one van driver, so I don't know how much we were supposed to have drug tests.
Typically random, correct?
Right. So if you have one, you know...
One driver is hardly out of random.
Right. So it isn't as strict as the most common, but...
You have to have your physical, food, DOT.
Physical, or what I call...
You didn't say, you just said DOT.
I didn't, yeah. Sorry about that. Okay, yeah.
And I don't see us going through for a teacher who's going to maybe take three students across to one of the businesses to do some of that, to do the drug test or the physical or anything like that. But I think all the other training, as far as watching the video and making sure we have a copy license and all that kind of stuff.
And your criminal background check.
Yeah.
And we've done all those with our staff, so. So just be aware of that. Also be aware that Newland and Spicer has been in contact with us, what we're email, to see if there's anything that we can come up with that might work. On Thursday, I sent you the email. We're going to do a real conference call. Lori and I just have that discussion to see what they were to envision. Certainly, cost will be an issue, particularly after my enrollment counts right now. But certainly, I think it's well worth our time and effort to at least have the discussion. That doesn't cost us anything other than our time. So just be aware of that. I know that I talked with Matt. We're looking at getting the sound system down here, which will, I hope that will help our community better hear our needs. That's all I have.
Okay. Anything else?
Matt, I had one quick thing. I addressed it just a little bit ago. It has to do with this declining, potential declining of enrollment. I think it's a good idea that we leave. But there's some positive things that we could do to try and move forward. And when I was asking about contacting local businesses, if they're contacting us, do we send a letter out there to people, maybe them, the city, anybody else? If they know of anybody moving into the district or whatever? So that some point in time, there's a welcome visit? Or maybe at least a welcome to our community? And you can have somebody from all different sources. I remember one time hearing about a district that, we like to think they're not competitive with us, but they are in my mind, where administration showed up about two weeks after they came to the school and personally thanked them, away from everything else, for coming to their school. But there are things that are kind of not there, but if we kind of, and honestly, I'm rambling on the bar, but if we have something occur this year that's maybe not so positive and then we go to next year and it's not so positive. When do we start to figure out that we might need to move forward with something that would promote what we have more than, just kind of wait and see? Just, I think, I think maybe, you know, we have committees of everything under the sun. Do we need to look at that and find out, what do we really need to do to make sure that we are coordinating with the city, we're coordinating with the chamber, we're coordinating with companies that have people that are driving here to work? Maybe two members of a family and their children are going to school 30 miles away. Is that really a good idea? Maybe, maybe it's because we just haven't told them what we have to offer here. Does that make some sense?
I do think that it does, because it's been a while since the district has done strategic planning. And certainly, as we start to go down that road, I think that fits very well into that, getting our community involved in all of those pieces about what does Paine's military school want to become in the district and the community. So I certainly think that as we start looking at strategic planning on where we want to go and what we want to be and where our community also lies and all that, I think that fits very well into that.